And if you could, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, your God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The town of Burlington will be holding the April 15th meeting of the planning board as a virtual electronic meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. As such, the governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20.
This meeting will be held via Cisco Webex via the accessible link as follows. So it's burlingtonwebex.burlingtonma.com. The meeting code access code is 1296899513 and the meeting password is 1645. You can also join by phone by dialing 6173150704. Alternatively, we're also being broadcast on the Bcat government channel, which can be found on Comcast Channel number 99, RCM Channel 15 and Verizon Channel 41. We're also streamed on late Facebook Live and the Bcat Facebook page. The public will be able to make comments during the hearing during the time for public comment. Questions can be asked via WebEx, the WebEx chat function, Facebook Live, and via calling the planning office at 7812701645. We'll also be checking our email, planning@berlinson.org during the meeting. And all persons wishing to ask a question may make a comment, must identify themselves during the appropriate time. If anybody has any questions regarding participation during the meeting, please feel free to call planning staff at 7812701645 or email us at planning@berlinson.org. And Chairman Larue, we need to call the meeting to order, I do believe. So if I did we not?
I thought I did.
No, no, we used to do a roll call.
We do need to do a roll call.
That's what I mean. You did.
Do need to do a roll call. Thank you.
So Chairman Larue.
Here.
Vice Chairman Impampa. Member Clerk Raymond. Member Covino.
Here.
Member Españo.
Here.
Member Gaffney. So we are leaving on two more people. Kristin, do you want to? Actually, yeah.
We are waiting on Paul and Joe. Just for everyone who's listening, Member Gaffney will be joining us later. We're not exactly sure what time and Member Rappaport will not be joining us tonight.
So we just have three so far?
Yeah. I think we can take a motion to continue, correct, or not?
You need to wait till you have.
You need a forum.
You need a forum for an action. You could read announcements.
Barbara?
Yes, please.
Sure. So announcements, so Patriots Day. It was April 19th, this upcoming Monday, all town offices will be closed. On the sculpture park, subcommittee will meet on April 20th at 7:30 AM via Zoom. The Board of Appeals will be happening on April 20th at 7:30 PM via WebEx. There are some additional announcements. The ZBRC will be having their next meeting on April 30th at 6:30 PM. On April 29th, the Housing Partnership will have their meeting at 6 o'clock PM. They're going to have a presentation for mass housing to look into doing the municipal housing trust fund, which is awesome. And on May 3rd at 5:30, the ZBRC Subcommittee Sign Subcommittee will be holding their meeting. So that's kind of what's happening.
Actually, I think we have another announcement that Mike Espoira wanted to make.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a quick announcement I want to share. The Metropolitan Area Planning Council is offering a scholarship open to any senior in the secondary school MAPC region, which is the 101 cities and towns surrounding Boston. And Burlington is one of those communities. It's a cash prize of at least $500 to the school of your choice. It's called the Charles W. Elliott II Scholarship. And it's for any student planning to study in any course of study that improves our use planning, that improves our living environment in the areas of housing, economic development, transportation, environmental protection, energy conservation, and public health impacts. And the deadline to apply is May 5th. And you can apply at mapc dot ma backslash Elliott with one L app. So that's E L I O T app. Or you can contact Heidi Anderson at the MAPC at handerson@mapc.org. It would be cool to see a Burlington senior. So but any senior in these in the region, it'd be cool to see a Burlington senior get a scholarship from the MAPC. I just wanted to share that with everybody. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just one comment on the announcements. I think Liz, I think you may have said the 30th of April for the ZBRC. If I gave you that, I was wrong. It should be the 28th of April. I'm sorry.
So I understand Member Impampa is having some technical difficulty signing on. I'm hoping maybe somebody on staff can reach out to him and help him get in so we can get started.
I think you have, you're seeing Brady's camera off because I think he's probably calling both of them.
Okay, great.
Member Covino, did you have an update of the next Housing Partnership meeting?
The next Housing Partnership meeting will be the 29th, I believe it is. Is that what I said, Liz? I'm sorry. And, and we've been talking about, I know you, or I think most of you realize it's quite a pile of money sitting in the affordable housing account or whatever. And I know that town meeting and the rest of us were very concerned about the accountability of how that money gets spent and who spends it and whatever. So somebody from Mass Housing was going to come out and give us or get online, actually. Don't have to come out anymore and give us a some knowledge about how to set up a municipal housing trust. And as the, the Housing Partnership is only advisory to the selectmen, then it gets dumped kind of in their lap, I guess. This is how it works. But I think it should be an interesting meeting to anybody who's interested in in how that money gets spent and the accountability that I know there's, there was, there was some talk at town meeting about, about the accountability. And I understand that. So it should be interesting. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ernie. I think that Member Impampa has joined us. Joe, are you here?
I am, yep.
Great, okay.
The number on the agenda was not the right number, wouldn't let me in.
Okay. Well, we're glad you're here now.
I'm here now.
We have done announcements and next on our agenda, we do have one item that we are continuing.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take item seven R out of order for discussion purposes.
Okay, second. Anyone?
Second.
Thank you.
Member Larue.
Yes.
Member Vice Chairman Impampa.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney. Member Rappaport is absent.
Okay, all right. Item 7R is a public hearing application for approval of an amendment to a definitive subdivision plan, four and five Redmond Street, Murray Hills Incorporated.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make, go ahead, Mike. Go ahead, Mike.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of May 6, 2021, as requested in an email by the applicant dated April 14, 2021.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impampa.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney is absent for now and Member Rappaport is absent.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is citizens' time. If there is anyone that would like to speak on a matter that is not on our agenda, please identify yourself now.
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Welcome. Hi, hello, Mr. Miller. Please go ahead.
My name's Dave Miller, Gloria Circle. And I just want to bring up a bit of a safety issue. Those of us on Gloria are having when we try to pull our cars out of Gloria Circle onto Francis Wyman Road. The construction that's going on at the Francis Wyman Houses of the General Walker Estates, vehicles are parked all along Francis Wyman and it's obstructing the view when we try to pull out of Gloria. They used to be parking on Evelyn. And I assume they must have got chased out of there because probably the people didn't want it. And I realize they have to park somewhere. So I don't know if there's any answer, but I thought I'd just bring it up to see if anybody had any ideas because it does cause a problem for us.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. I wonder if we should reach out to the safety officer and see if he could identify a safer place for them to park their vehicles during the day. Kristin, does that make sense? All right, we'll do that. We'll reach out to the safety officer and hopefully come to a resolution pretty quickly.
Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during citizens' time? Seeing no one, we will move on. We do not have any legal notices or nonapprovals or administrative matters. So we're moving on to our first item, which is item 7A. A public hearing to amend the network drive at Northwest Park Plan Development District zoning bylaws to permit the integration of new residential uses and associated dimensional standards, parking requirements and site amenities. Nord Bloom Development Community and its affiliate network Drive Lot 10 owner LLC is the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chair. For the record, Robert Buckley, Raymond Bronstein, I have with me this evening Christine Hung from my office, as well as Todd Fremont Smith from the Nord Bloom Companies. As you will recall, we were before the planning board with respect to this proposal, which is to amend the zoning on the network drive PDD former Sun Microsystems Campus to permit up to nine residential units on the small, a small portion of the parcel which the Kent Cottage sits. This is being done as an effort to generate the income to rehab and preserve the Kent Cottage. Since we were here last, we've been to land use as well as ZBRC. They're waiting to see how the planning board acts. In the interim, we've also had some internal discussions and have agreed that as part of the project that one of the units would be offered to the town as an affordable unit in compliance with the guidelines of DHCD to permit it to be counted towards subsidized housing inventory. I think that's the update since the last meeting.
Okay. Well, thank you. I know we had quite an extended conversation about that. And I do appreciate Nora Bloom's very flexibility and generosity on this.
It must have had a creative discussion. It was a creative discussion.
It was.
We saw the light.
Kristin, did you have anything you wanted to add before I turn this over to the board for questions?
Not too, not a lot, just a couple of comments in terms of just the property itself. And obviously, we've been looking at this for some time. There was an office proposal that did come in. You guys permitted that proposal. It just didn't, they just couldn't make it work financially. One of the two things that we want to make sure happen on this site is one, just some figuring out some sort of just way that we can ensure that the Kent Cottage itself is visually and aesthetically protected in terms of maintaining its historical significance and integrity, which I know the applicant is certainly looking into doing. The other piece was the, you know, making sure that as we move toward site plan and special permit discussions with the planning board that we ensure that we're making connections and pedestrian connections. And I know I've already reached out to the applicant to try to figure out if there's additional grant opportunities or other opportunities with the state that we can help make those connections along Middle Six Turnpike into area amenities. Otherwise, the affordable discussion we had at the last meeting, we've had discussions since then. So at this point, we would recommend that this would be a favor. We would recommend favorably on this application to town meeting. And, and I know the board still had a couple of questions that you can hash out this evening.
Hello.
Hi, Paul. Thanks for joining us. Sorry if you had trouble getting in.
Me too, because I had a couple of questions to start with.
Oh, well, we are currently talking about the property at Kent Cottage. Why don't we finish this item before we move on to your questions, okay?
Sure.
I was about to turn this over to the board and I was going to start with Vice Chairman Impampa.
Thank you, Barbara. So I'm completely in favor of moving forward on this thing. My only thoughts were, given the fact that the Kent Cottage, I think they looked at different options to see if there was any way they could allow access or, you know, the public to have access or historic commission or whatever. And were unable to come to any kind of an option that incorporated that. So my thoughts were that the next best thing would be that in lieu of a, an affordable unit, if they were to take a monetary payment and, you know, keep it as a regular, you know, market rate unit and figure out what the monetary value of that was and to take that amount of money and put it into a fund for the historic commission to, as they move forward, if they identify historic properties that they can either acquire or, you know, use in a historic manner to rehab or acquire historic properties going into the future. And they've talked about starting a fund to that effect and having it funded on a regular basis through mechanisms like this and through town funding and any kind of grants they could receive. And I'm not sure if they've actually started the account yet, but if they haven't, this would be a great way to start the account and, and allow them to potentially preserve properties going forward into the future, historic properties. So that's my proposal. I feel like, quite honestly, you know, we, you know, we've got 12%. It's mandated that we have 10. We have far exceeded that by our own planning. And I feel like one unit really doesn't, is not going to affect, you know, our percentage either way of affordable units within the town. But from a historic perspective, I think it, it would really mean a lot for the Historic Society or Historic Commission to be able to have access to funding for future projects. So I feel like it's, and it's, and I feel like it's more appropriate because in this case, we're, we're actually talking about a historic building. So I feel it, feel it to be a little more appropriate to take those funds and put them towards the Historic Commission and the preservation of historic properties going forward. So that's kind of my thoughts on my proposal on this.
Okay, thank you, Member Impampa. I would like to just mention that Nord Bloom's offer of a affordable unit in that small development was at my request. So I want to acknowledge that they've been very responsive. And so I think we should consider what Vice President Impampa has suggested. But I also sort of want to give credit where credit is due, that this was something that we had requested of Nord Bloom. So.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I, I. In any way saying that they're not being generous and very cooperative and very helpful with us here. I commend them for, you know, for, for going to this extent to try to preserve that property. And I, and I really feel that way and I feel going forward. You know, my only thing is if it, if it wouldn't matter either way to them, if they could make it a full rate unit and then do a payment in lieu of.
Interesting. And I knew from criticizing, I just sort of wanted to acknowledge that they've been very responsive to.
Madam Chair, may I make a comment on that?
Of course.
I mean, I think from the applicant's standpoint, I don't think, I think we're indifferent, subject to certain limitations. I just want to make sure that people understand that the value, first of all, this is for sale housing. This is not rental housing, so it's valued differently. But the value of a for sale unit after the construction costs and the, the cost of, of rehabbing or directing some of the funds to the rehab of the Kent Cottage, I don't know, Todd, is probably around $40,000 to $50,000.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's how we would look at it. That's the land value for that unit. So you're saying.
The one way of doing it is that we could offer at the town's discretion either a unit to qualify it for affordable or if you, in lieu of that, like the cash payment to preserve other historical options. We could, we intend to deliver to town meeting. And I'll be working with town council, a letter that will set forth the various other commitments that is for sale, that this is not a bait and switch where we take the cottage down and build nine units, that the housing, the house remains and that will be preserved and there'll be some type of protection for the rehab of it. And it was something else, but there were a number of different issues that we would, you know, before we go to town meeting, have to lock up so that, that those issues are protected.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for your flexibility. So I think what I'm going to do is as I ask each member to make their comments, I'll ask them to also weigh in on this issue.
Yeah.
Sort of do an unofficial roll call on that, okay? So Paul Raymond, would you like to weigh in on, on the project as well as on this question?
Okay, I didn't hear any previous discussion. My feeling was that, to me, that's an important building. I mean, that's the, the only representation I can see like that, really, that, that's so visible and represents where Burlington, where Burlington came from. And I wanted to hear from land use because Monty Pearson came to one of the meetings and made some comments about it that were not in line with what we're going forward with. And, and I have great respect for the Land Use Committee of Town Meeting and have many times changed my opinion about things depending upon what they came up with. But I would like to see the building, the facade, the building maintained as it is and upgraded to a residence so that building would be standalone as a residence. But it looked to me from the plans, like, you know, with all these other things going on and so forth, the, the, the Kent Cottage got lost in the, in the, in the plan.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you. I do believe that Attorney Buckley said that they have, that the applicant has been to land use.
Right.
Could you give us a quick update on how that went?
It may be better for, remember Covino, he was, I believe you were there, Ernie. But I thought it went very well. I think that they were waiting to hear from you. I understand what Monty said at the last meeting, but I think there was a realization that, you know, Burlington has been less than stellar in its ability to preserve architecturally and historic buildings of the past, primarily, as Joe indicated, a lack of funding to, to do so.
The other thing I heard, Bob, is, and Ernie can correct us, I heard of an openness to the project. I heard a deference to what the Historic Commission. So Monty was going to check in with Historic Commission. And I think their logic was, you know, is this really an important building? Why are we trying to save it? And if it is an important building, let's try to save it. But if it's not, then maybe we shouldn't, you know. So I think that they were pretty open minded to this, I thought, most of the members. And, but they want to go check in with Historic, so it feels like everyone's checking in with everyone else. Ernie, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but that's what I remember anyway.
Thank you. Well, then, Member Raymond, do you have any other questions? Or should I turn it over to Ernie Covino?
No, that was, that was my comment.
All right, great. Then, Member Covino, please weigh in.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think what Attorney Buckley said does reflect what land use, the discussion at land use was, it sounded like they were basically in favor of it if there was really historical value there. And I guess we really are, nobody's heard from the Historical Commission, at least at any of the meetings I've been at. I haven't heard them. So they were waiting to kind of hear what they said. But philosophically, yeah, they were, they were in favor of saving historical buildings. And, and this being one, they would be in favor of it. I also attended the ZBRC meeting last night where this was also discussed. And, and they, they, they took a straw vote, I believe. And they seem to be in favor of it, although I don't think they took an actual vote. I'm not, I'm not really sure. They were waiting, right? Yep. And, and one of the things that came up there, which was interesting and, and maybe we could handle it if, if in fact this does go to town meeting and pass, which hopefully it will, is that when we get to the site plan, they were concerned that the two budding buildings, as shown on the conceptual plan, now, this is a conceptual plan that was shown, obviously, that maybe, and I know the, the applicant was trying to hide the, the parking in the garages in back of the buildings, but they, those two buildings kind of blocked the Kent Cottage. And there was, there was some, some talk about if at the site plan application and, and meeting that maybe those could be reconvenienced so the Kent Cottage was more prominent. They also had concerns about sidewalk connectivity, which I think Kristin mentioned, and a, also covenant or a letter to town meeting saying that, that the Kent Cottage would stay. And what was the other thing? I think that was Preserve Kent Cottage. Right, that was it. Thank you. And I, I'm definitely in favor of what Joe is proposing. I think, I think some money to the Historical Commission to, to help save some, some future buildings would be better because we're, we're, we're okay with affordable housing right now. And this is only one year. Thank you.
Madam Chair, as to the issues that Mr. Covino brought up, I think the applicant is agreeable, agreeable to all of those suggestions, the interconnectivity. Again, this was a conceptual plan. I know that Todd and I discussed it after the fact that whether, you know, the, the buildings, the final layout would open it up a little more to have the visibility, the corridor, the visual corridor to the building. I think you have to remember when you go to town meeting, you don't want to spend a lot of money on engineering upfront because you don't know if you're going to get the approval. But we do have to come back to the planning board and we're aware of all the issues that have been raised.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Attorney Buckley. Member Espoira, would you like to weigh in, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would briefly. I am in favor of the project. I want to thank Nord Bloom. They always seem to be a good partner for the town in hearing our concerns and doing their best to meet us in compromise. So I do want to thank them for that and appreciate that. I like the project and the fact that we are preserving Kent Cottage. And as far as choosing between one of the units as affordable or a monetary contribution to the Historic Commission, I really have no preference. As long as one of the two is done, I think they're both good things. I have no preference either way on that. I think that's both great things. So all I had. Thank you, Madam Chair. You're on mute, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mike. So my turn. I also don't have any concerns. I'm looking forward to the, to the actual site plan process. If this does get through town meeting, and I hope it does. I'm very happy to see you trying to save the Kent Cottage and I hope that this works. I also, like Mike, do not really have a strong preference one way or the other. So I'm happy to go with whatever the rest of our board members think. It seems like there's a preference for having me going toward the Historical Commission. And I think as long as that in a separate account that is earmarked specifically for that purpose, I could be in favor of that. So I.
Just one other thing I noticed. I looked back at my notes. And the other thing that ZBRC would like to see changed is, I guess in the article right now, it says nine units of housing and they would like to see it say up to nine units of housing.
I think we communicated that change today to the, I don't know, Christine, did we, did we reach out to the town today on that?
Yep, we reached out to Betty, too. The Warren article has already gone to the printer, but, but we're agreeable to making that change to the wording of the article.
Okay, thank you. So I would like to find out if there are any other people here that would like to comment on the matter, especially if there is anyone here from the Historical Commission. Let's first ask that question. Is there anyone here from Historical Commission? And if not, then anyone. And if not, then anyone else who would like to speak on this matter, please identify yourself. Okay, seeing no one, I think we can move on for, to a recommendation. First, we do need to close the public hearing.
If I may. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npamba. Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Spahoe.
Yes.
Member Gaffney is absent. Member Rapport is absent.
Thank you. May I have another motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend favorably on the petition to amend the network drive at Northwest Park Plan Development PD District zoning bylaws to permit the integration of a new residential uses and associated dimensional standards, parking requirements and site amenities submitted by the Norblum Development Company, its affiliate Network Drive Lot 10 owner LLC.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
I'm staying.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Spahoe.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, may I suggest that, as I indicated, that we're going to be delivering a letter to town meeting. Um, I think it, you know, we'll, we'll lay it out in the alternative. And I think the appropriate decision point would be when we're before the site plan, when we're, we're before the planning board, so that there'll be public discussion and input at that point as the design takes shape, whether to, uh, grant a unit or affordable housing, or as the board has suggested, perhaps funding to the historical. That also gives some lead time if the historical has to set up an account, et cetera, and the usual housekeeping. But is that all right, Todd?
That's great. And again, thank you all very much for your support. It's a small project, but I think it's an important one.
Thank you. And we're, we're, I'm personally very happy to see the cottage preserved and I'm looking forward to seeing what you come up with for the site plan.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank your staff as well as my staff working on this, uh, for the creative ideas that we tried to kick around. Because it is a small project, but I think that, uh, you know, the, these are the types of projects that people drive by and they notice. So, yeah, so we'll do it right.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, next on our agenda, we are going to take a number of items together. May I have a motion to take items seven D through seven L together for discussion purposes, although we will be voting them separately.
So. Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Spahoe.
Yes.
Member Gaffney, member Rapport are absent.
Thank you. Um, items.
Can I step in quickly? Um, I, I don't have any issue doing this one first, but, um, item B is the, um, Article Seven Amendment.
I'm so sorry. Okay. I flipped two pages. Um, I am.
Motion to table item B. Why do you want to? I'm sorry.
I could go either way. If you want to, um, move forward.
Introduce this one. Let's move forward with items.
The rezoning, that is fine.
Yes, it looks like it's actually C through K.
It is item C.
Okay. So, um, let's do these first since we already introduced them. Items C through K are all submitted by the planning board and they are all public hearings to petition to rezone property to the high-rise industrial district. Item C is for twenty South Avenue. Item D is for forty South Avenue. Item E is for seventy Blanchard Road. Item F is for seventy-six Blanchard Road. Item G is for seventy-eight Blanchard Road. Item H is for eighty Blanchard Road. Item I is for twenty Blanchard Road. Item J is for ninety-nine South Bedford Street and item K is for one hundred and eleven South Bedford Street. So I'm going to ask Kristen to introduce these.
Sure. I'm going to share a presentation. Since we, uh, first, um, my order was in the staff report order, but that's all right. So the first is, or the first Article thirty-three rezoning to the high-rise industrial district. I know I mentioned this the last meeting. Um, but as, um, we've gotten a few comments on it in terms of high-rise industrial and it's, oh, man, I don't want all these high-rise industrial buildings along Blanchard Road. Um, the only real high-rise industrial building that was built under high-rise industrial building is, um, seven New England Executive Park, or now to be known as seven hundred, uh, District Ave. In terms of what that would have looked like in IH, if you all recall back in January of twenty twenty, we took the high-rise industrial district, really kind of looking at it of this does not work. What should we like kind of move it into so it can be a workable zoning district? We put all of the side set side rear, um, front set back requirements exactly as they are in the general industrial IG district. Um, we did allow for the height to be a little bit higher, um, ninety versus eighty in the IH. And that was kind of to figure out how did that floor to floor and that's kind of this new advanced manufacturing, life science type spaces. Um, and that was way down from the original one hundred and fifty-five feet, which was IH. So, um, just to rest assured, we probably should rename this district to something else and we can have, you know, comments to that effect at a point in time. But, you know, as much as we want to try to keep things as simple as zoning can possibly even be simple. Um, we didn't want to kind of upset the apple cart and start rezoning or renaming districts at the time. So it is the IH, quote, high-rise industrial district, but rest assured that the district name is actually, you know, more of a misnomer and these, um, the criteria is very much more similar to the IG district for which most of these sites sit in. So what we have is, we have Cluster A, um, which is in, along Middlesex Turnpike. Um, that is the AMC Cinema and the Extended Stay Hotel next door. Cluster B is along Blanchard, Blanchard Wheeler Road, um, in, which is seventy Blanchard, seventy-six, seventy-eight and eighty Blanchard. Cluster C is the corner of South Bedford Street and Blanchard Road. Um, the themes we really looked at, um, to look at these clusters is one, we want to look at areas of town that are kind of the next, what's the next chapter, you know, Middlesex Turnpike, Third Ave, the summit, the district. We've really seen revitalization and, you know, transition and evolution of those areas. This corridor is kind of that next phase, especially with, um, the increased development and, um, focus with the northeast in north, at northeastern, in their northeastern campus here in town. Um, which is sparring quite a bit of exciting new things and partnerships, um, out of northeastern and area businesses. And looking at this corridor, we have, um, some newer buildings, but mostly some more aging buildings. Um, I will say I did an analysis along this corridor because there was some concern that came up as to, you know, if we rezone, are we going to be seeing a lot more space? Um, and these, a lot of these buildings were built, um, seventies, eighties, nineties, um, for the most part. They, on average, are, go between kind of a point four-two to point five FAR already. Um, especially in the seventy-six, seventy-eight, eighty, um, that cluster B. That, so therefore, when we, in the IH district, um, we did allow for businesses to go, if they included at least, a percentage of laboratory space to go to a point five FAR. And I just want to clarify for the group that the point F, point five FAR, if that in fact was going to be a redevelopment proposal, is not very much more space, if any, um, in a lot of the buildings along this corridor. So, I know that had come up, but just in general, the, you know, why are we doing this? Why, why are we doing these clusters? Um, and why are we looking, you know, looking at this corridor for, you know, the next chapter? Looking at to make connections within the corridor. The trustees have taken over management of Mary Cummings Park and have done a lot of enhancements there. Um, but Blanchard Road as a whole has issues. Uh, the sidewalk connectivity, it doesn't really exist. There's flooding issues. Bike path is spotty. Um, and then there's traffic issues that are causing traffic to go into kind of the neighborhoods, which obviously within Muller and Eugene Road in that neighborhood are, are concerned to residents. So, you know, how do we reposition this area and why, why should we do this? So, right now, um, as you all know, we've talked about life science for the last couple of years. Um, life science is growing in Massachusetts. Uh, Massachusetts is the largest life science kind of epicenter um, in the world for the most part. And even in the suburbs, we have a, um, even if you take out Kendall Square and you, you still have a huge area of, um, of life science growth. We are, um, based on the work that we have done and you guys have approved, and we thank you for that. Um, begun to be on the map. We are from Platinum Community. Um, in articles that have come out most recently, there was an article about Weston, Weston of all places being the next life science hub. But, you know, at least noting that Burlington is an emerging life science, um, cluster. Um, also that the industry likes to be together. They like to be with talent. They like to be with other, you know, other types of, um, companies that can help do what they do, help manufacture, um, and, you know, share, um, share and information and other types of, you know, everyone's doing a little bit. Someone's making the shovel, someone's, you know, doing something else. And having everyone together, especially with Millipore being here has been quite a benefit. Um, so it's important for us to kind of make that statement of in the I, in IH district, as you guys know, that it's life sciences by right. As you also know, there's a lot of special permits that go with life science. So it's, it is by right and it's, it's good to, to say that, but there are a lot of secondary special permits. Um, and there's growth and there's growth in this district. So what does that mean? Um, oh, and also Northeastern, and I just wanted to highlight Northeastern again because, you know, they've established this global partnership to improve quality of medicine. This picture is actually in the innovation campus here in Burlington and they've really made a mark in the industry, putting Burlington, putting the pin in Burlington. And I think hopefully we're going to see a lot of spin out from that. Um, so again, why, why do this? I think right now, as we see every kind of ten years, we have these opportunities of time when things come together. If you remember back in two thousand and eight, we started doing, uh, we, you know, we rezone Northwest Park in the district um, at the property owner's request. This is actually us being proactive to look at this corridor, um, to try to think about that next chapter because we know that if we can do this and kind of leverage the, and get consensus from the town that yes, this is what we want, we want to see redevelopment in this quarter, redevelopment versus new development versus more development is definitely on Burlington's priority of trying to, how do we make older sites and buildings better? Um, better for the environment, better in stormwater and better in tax value, um, overall. And how can those redevelopment opportunities provide for, um, public-private partnership and funding and state funding? And right now is a fantastic time, um, to be talking through with the state as we did with Middlesex Turnpike. I mean, we had, I mean, Middlesex Turnpike and, you know, and most recently in WRC, millions of dollars of projects that Burlington actually, you know, through the help and partnerships with a lot of other folks, Burlington hasn't had to foot as much as we, um, the bill as much as we um, would have if we did it all on our own. So there are some questions of, you know, why don't we just do this first and then, you know, why don't we just fix the road first? But you kind of really need to say, okay, we're, we're making this commitment to the next chapter of Burlington, but we need help and we need state funding and we need private partnership to fund the bottleneck at Cambridge Bedford and South Bedford Street in Wilburn. I mean, as we've talked about, we did have help from Northeastern of creating that plan. So we could get it on the, um, the transportation improvement plan, which it is. Um, but we, again, we still have sidewalks flooding issues. We need bicycle connections. And how do we better work with the trustees to get access into the park and, um, there's sidewalks along that corridor, um, and again, reduce traffic and cut through. So there's, um, for the first time in a long time, um, state funding for planning grants and design work, which is, I don't know, I think I've seen it once ever and that was in like two thousand and four. Um, and I, my, our hope is by taking this initiative, we can start kind of planning this neighborhood, working with the residents, working with, I know Dave Webb was on the land use committee and working with that side of town to figure out what is it, what are these issues? So I identify them correctly. So we can start designing them. So then when, you know, capital funding might become available, um, especially with the infrastructure, federal infrastructure bill that's being talked about, we can start to tap into that. So, um, that's, that's kind of the hope with the repositioning, especially along Wheeler and Blanchard, the positioning of the cinema and the Extended Stay Hotel. I think we can all see that, um, and I know some of us like to go to the movies and hopefully we still see kind of that, that type of event center. But this, that site, it, it, the intersection of the highways, it sits high up, it's a, you know, poster child for a great site for, um, a really prominent building in Burlington. And we want to make sure that, um, you know, if there is reinvestment in that property, that it's something that we can really see as a high-quality building, high-quality jobs and, you know, a lot of value, tax value. And from that, this is just kind of an image of, um, the lower left is South Bedford Street, um, in the intersection of Wilburn. We talked about desk, I mean, that, we need, if that is not fixed, that, that opens up that whole corridor because you, uh, those of you that go through this intersection in the evening, it's, you know, all the way to Kinda Graff Drive. Um, and it's been, it's been a great effort to try to work with Wilburn to, um, improve this. And if we can, you know, get this done, Mary Cummings Park is an important asset in this area to really revitalize um, the, the neighborhood. And how can we better connect bike paths, whether off-road, on-road? Um, and then complete the sidewalk, um, connections that Oracle, as I show in the lower, um, right picture, um, the Oracle sidewalks at the beginning of um, Blanchard, South Bedford kind of area there. So, um, that's, that's the, that's the presentation for, for the rezonings and why we're looking to, to do this now. So any questions? And I can stop sharing, but I can certainly share again if anyone wants to, has any questions about the slides, but so we can all see each other. Just let me know. I can pull it back up again.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. Um, all right. I'm going to start at the other end of my list and see if Mike Spahoe is ready to weigh in on this or ask any questions.
I am, Madam Chair. Thanks.
Thank you.
So in our, our last meeting, I want to address something. While I was, um, gushing over my support over this, there were some comments in the background from someone who was, was probably less than agreeable to what I was saying. And I want to put this out to anyone out there. If there's anything I say or anything I say on here that you disagree with, feel free to reach out to any of us, um, elected officials. All of our contact info is on rohingse.org. I will talk to anybody about anything. I'll respond to any message. And if there's any concerns, feel free. I'm an open book. That said, some of those comments may be reconsidered, some of my thoughts in support for this. And I took a deep dive into looking into these clusters. And specifically the Blanchard Road area. I spoke to, um, some town meeting members. I spoke to some members of our ZBRC. I spoke to people who live in precinct seven and there are real concerns about the, some of the things Kristen mentioned, the flooding. The traffic on Muller Road is really, really bad. And that, that bottleneck, the Wilburn one that Kristen just mentioned is really bad. Um, I'm all for, um, the momentum that we are creating with the biotech and the life sciences, but I think I'm going to be against, um, Cluster B at this point, just because of all the concerns I've heard from the residents in the area. I, I'm, I'm in favor of Cluster A and C, but that seventy-six, seventy-eight, eighty Blanchard Road is problematic with the traffic and the concerns. And some of the concerns they had, um, were the density. I know that with life sciences, um, it's going to be like a less dense uh, use because there are less people in labs. I appreciate that. Also, some of the concerns were, do we have the infrastructure to monitor some of the, uh, the biotech that's going in? And I know we just approved um, the new position for Board of Health. So this is a real tough one. You think you kind of have to balance, um, what we want to do here. So I will be in support of Clusters A and C. But I'll change my stance due to some of the diligence I've done on Cluster B. I'm not going to be so much in favor of that one at this point. Thank you, Madam Chair. And you're mute.
About that. Thank you, Mike. About that. Thank you, Mike. Thank you. Member Cavino, you're up.
So I am. Thank you. I, I I understand where Mike's coming from and where some of the people on Muller Road area and the Eugene Road area are very concerned about us impacting their neighborhood even further than it has been. But I think one of the ways that we are hopefully going to be able to solve some of those problems is reach out to the state and, and, and the federal government as those infrastructure bills are coming forward with the fact that we are ready, willing and able to increase the income to the state of Massachusetts by inviting higher-value businesses in. But we need some help on the infrastructure because I don't think Burlington, the town of Burlington, is going to be able to do what has to be done on that road. There may, from what I can see, and it may involve land takings on the dry side of Blanchard Road to make it a little wider so we can get sidewalks and bike paths in there. Because on the, on the wet side, we're dealing with wetlands. And I think that's, that's always been a problem. Whenever we've asked people to, to, to do something about putting sidewalks in. So for, for that reason and, and for the reason that, as Kristin has said, that most of the businesses are already at a high FAR, a point five or just below point five. I don't think we're really changing much, except by changing this to IH. We're also, if in fact, the, the building-to-ground issue is clarified with town meeting. We're also allowing these, these parcels now to use parking garages, which hopefully will increase the green space. Especially in like the RJ Kelly property at the corner of South Bedford Street and Blanchard Road, where there are single-story buildings that spread out all over the lot. I would think, hopefully, that if we allowed them to go to parking garages, and if they did, we could recover some of that green space. I think I would be in favor of this. I would be in favor, not, not I think, I would be in favor of it. And also let me just say that ZBRC meeting last night, they said that they are not going to be taking any vote on the rezoning articles for Cluster because it really doesn't involve much of a text change or whatever, which is what they really set up to address. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Cavino. Member Raymond.
Yes, one thing I would do is change that, the nomenclature, because it makes a difference. What you call something and what it is. And to me, this increase in height is minimal. But the point has been made that with biotech and medical uses of, medical research uses, that the density of the people in the buildings would be far less than it would be if it was a traditional office building. The other thing is, I don't know, things are changing so fast. Most of my, I hate to call them children now because they're almost as old as I am. But most of my kids are working a lot remotely now and so forth. So we're really in a, in a situation of flux as far as trying to figure out, you know, what's going to happen as far as traffic and so forth is concerned, which is my major point down there. I would just say this, I'm very aware of the wetlands down there. I mean, in the springtime, those wetlands are almost to the level of the road. And if you go to some of the parking lots on the 95 side, those older buildings, you could walk off the edge of the parking lot and you'd be up to your shoulders in muck and water. So those all have to be considered as these are developed. But they, they do, that area, if it's going to have any, any value to the town, if you will, any increased value is going to be through this type of redevelopment. And, and I think we have to put consideration in the neighbors up front when we're, you know, considering how much density we're going to allow in these buildings. But, you know, progress is going to happen whether you want it or not and things are going to change. And as they said on Site A up on the hill, I mean, the cinema is long been, on disused by use really. And I noticed, I saw recently that the cinema in Woburn is closing and that whole site apparently is going to be developed. So I could see the value of doing that. And I would think you could attract a pretty high-value client for that spot on the hill because it's so visible that as that gets redeveloped. So I don't have any problem with that one. But I, when you say high-rise, I'm thinking increase in density. But my concern is being mitigated because I don't think if the use is what we hope it's going to be and what it appears to be evolving to, that this will really increase the density of the traffic very much. And it might even mitigate a little bit. So my opinion on this, on these two sites is changing. And I'm less inclined to say, to vote against it, to be honest with you.
To vote against?
That's my comment.
I'm sorry, Paul, you're inclined to vote against this?
No, I said my, my, my original implication was forget about it.
Oh.
And, but then, but then as I looked at it, I, I apparently didn't, it didn't come across as to what my thinking was that the density is going to be less in these buildings if in fact they're medical use. In other words, the concern about traffic would be even less than if they were traditional office buildings. Although we don't, that's going to be now with so many people working at home. But, but I think there would be less density in these buildings. So I would be more inclined to permit it, if you will.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just wanted to also say on Tuesday, I did present in front of Land Use and Land Use supported the article.
Okay. Thank you. Member Pemba.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I actually, Paul basically said part of what I wanted to say as well. You know, I think if we could guarantee ourselves to get, you know, the additional height is understood that, you know, in these life science buildings, I think we need that additional height. The problem is, you know, unintended consequences, you know, we raise the height, it's not guaranteeing that we're going to get a life science building in there. You know, and what we may get in turn is potentially, you know, another floor of office space. You know, so I guess my point is, and my biggest concern is, and I had stated this in the past as well, is, you know, additional traffic or unintended consequences from raising the height, even though it's 10 feet, it's the equivalent of another story on a building. And again, it isn't, if it's life science, because they need a higher ceiling. So I'm not sure if there's any safeguards we can put in place because, you know, especially down in that Cluster B, you know, we can't afford any, any more density on those sites down there. That's a real concern. So, you know, if there's some assurances that we could put in here that, you know, it won't result in just added floors or added square footage to the buildings by, you know, allowing another 10 feet of height, then I'm in favor of it because I do think we need to, you know, do these types of things to kind of lure in the life sciences. I think those are great uses and I think they're, you know, you know, through bad economies, we're going to, you know, they're going to prove to be, you know, phenomenal members of the town. But I, again, as much as I'm in favor, I want to make sure that there are, see if there's a way to put safeguards in here that we're not going to just get additional square footage by adding another 10 feet to this. You know, I think the intention was to get, to get buildings that had higher ceiling heights and no, and no more, no additional levels of, of, of office. So if there's some way we can kind of tighten that piece of it up, I'm absolutely in favor of it. But if we can't, I think there's some concerns, especially down in that Cluster B area.
So I just wanted to clarify, especially in Cluster B. Cluster B is almost, there are, some of Cluster B is already at a point five. The other buildings are at point four three and, or actually, I'm sorry, point four, yeah, point four three and four five. So you're really not looking at, and only if you have that life science component can you even go to the point five. Otherwise, you're at the point two five for a new development. So just to allay that concern about, especially about Cluster B, Cluster B is the closest to the point five of all of the clusters. So in terms of any, you know, the real concern about additional growth.
And that point five, and that point five and point three, that, that won't be affected by parking structures, right? You're talking about total lot space to floor, floor, to floor space, right?
Yeah, there's nothing, FAR is FAR. You can't build anything more than unless, you know, unless you had a variant, but that's a whole what-if. But, but overall, it does, that's as much as you can do, no matter how much you can park. And as I said, that's kind of where most of those buildings are today. The buildings right now are, for the most part, I don't have, you know, full, full analysis of all the uses. But you're looking more at a traditional office use. So if there is conversion, you're hopefully looking at a less, less employees per square foot when you start using more of the square footage for lab testing, R and D, and research.
So Kristin, have you done, have you done an actual analysis? Have you done a comparison, a side-by-side comparison of, you know, if, if, if this went into, let's say we allowed the IH and it was full capacity as a life science versus full capacity, you know, with the 80 instead of the 90 of office space? Do we know, I mean, I'd like to see the analysis on that to see what the difference on occupancy would be. You know what, for your typical life science and your typical office building. I'm sure it's less, but I've, I, I haven't seen any type of a comparison to be able to actually see how much less and if it truly is less.
I can say it definitely is, yeah, it is definitely yes, that it's less. We have looked at the comparison. We asked Millipore to come back with some data based on their original proposals, what they're actually seeing in terms of the number of bodies per square foot. And especially when we did the lower parking analysis back in January of 2020 for one per thousand for lab space, we're finding that that, that is very accurate. We're also looking at other communities in terms of kind of what are they seeing? So we get it right. So I don't have the exact, like, is it 30% less? Is it 50%? I don't have that exact number yet. I mean, you're still going to see some office uses within these buildings. But the more that you're using buildings for things, which I think is really the goal of to diversify Burlington. We have a lot of space that's cubicle office. The more we can use that space for machines that run tests that aren't, you know, that people need to come in every couple of days to that place, the less bodies we have kind of per square foot. So, and also businesses that need to be in buildings, which also help us continue to have buildings occupied by businesses as more and more of us start working from home. So.
So let me, so let me ask you a question. It's, I mean, is one way to do that, and I'm not sure if this is even a possibility or not, but is it possible to incorporate into the IG that a minimum height per floor?
You mean a maximum height per floor or a minimum height?
No. I mean, I mean a minimum, a minimum height per floor.
Potentially. I mean, you know, I know when we talk to life science, they're, you know, more like 14 feet minimum versus, you know, older office buildings are 10 to 12. But.
So maybe if we're going to increase the height of the buildings, then we can say we're going to go with a 14-foot minimum height per floor?
We could think about that. I mean, those type of things would need to be in a text amendment to the IH District where this is a rezoning to the IH, which we certainly could consider in future text amendments.
Or, you know, or the opposite, or the opposite to say, look, if they don't want, if they go within the 80 feet, then they can go with a normal height per floor. If they choose to go the 90 feet, it's going to be a minimum height per floor.
Okay. This is Barbara. I want to weigh in on this with a, with a thought. As I think that Member Pemba and Member Espio raised a lot of the same concerns that I have. And I'm, I'm still about probably 85% sure that I'm in favor of this. But I, I think that we're all pretty clear that we're in favor of it for Cluster A and Cluster C. What I'm going to suggest, because we do have a little bit more time before town meeting, is that we wrote on Cluster A and Cluster C tonight. Let's hold off on Cluster B because I think it would be beneficial to have a full board when we, when we discuss this. And also it will give us a chance to answer some of those other questions that have been raised tonight. So that's, that's my thought for tonight. But before we do anything else, I'd like to see if there are any people in the audience that would like to speak on this matter. So if there is, please identify yourself now. I thought I heard someone.
So you have Mr. Robert Duffy has his hand raised.
Mr. Duffy, please go ahead.
Hi, Madam Chair. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Um, so I'm one of the owners of 76, 78 and 80 Blanchard. I want to mention, we have some properties over in Waltham with quite a few biotech companies. And everything that Kristin said, I think was pretty much on point. They do use less parking. They do like to cluster together and they generally pay more rent, which obviously would help with the tax base. The thing that was, Kristin did hit on, which I didn't hear in the other meetings, which I think is an important point, is for existing buildings like 76, 78 and 80, you primarily only get very light biotech users. So for example, somebody might be in 7,000 square feet, the lab might only be 1,000 square feet because they're really not doing much of anything. A lot of times biotech is primarily on the computer, but they need the lab in order to run some tests. And because so much money is involved, if things go their way and they end up ultimately getting approved, they don't, there's no queues. They're not really, you know, squeezing people in. It's just an environment with less people in it. So I, I like your idea, you know, of having the full board to discuss Cluster B. But it would seem like B being existing buildings, it would be the less likely to cause more traffic. Because I would think at least our buildings, you know, we only have a three-per-parking ratio anyway now. I'm sure our buildings would generate less traffic if some of our office users were converted to light biotech users.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Member Espio, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'm, Madam Chair, for the chair, I would like to ask Mr. Duffy, do we know, could you, does he, could he give us the occupancy rates on 78, 76 and those buildings?
Well, 78 is pretty much full. That's a big building. 76 is empty. We're negotiating with the tenant. And 80 Blanchard is probably, I'm sorry, 76 is probably like 85% full.
And 78, you said is empty?
No, 78 is full. And 70, the largest building, 78 is completely full. One of the smaller buildings, 76, which is the closest to 70, that's empty. And we're negotiating with the tenant now who's a full-building user.
Okay, because I drove by, I saw the sign for, I think it was 76.
That's right. So that's empty now, but we're negotiating with somebody who's not a biotech user. But I would envision in those properties, some of the office tenants in the other buildings being, when they become empty, us trying to find light biotech users. Because we have an office back in Waltham that's us trying to find light biotech users because we have an office pack in Waltham that's 1.1 million square feet. It's nine buildings. And many of them have light biotech users in with the office users.
And did you mention 80 Blanchard? What was the occupancy?
Yeah, 80 is probably like 85%. We have like 4,000 square feet, and I think we just got like 3,000 square feet back.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, then I'm going to ask my board members how they feel about my suggestion that we vote on cluster A and cluster C and hold off on cluster B until we have a full board at our next meeting. Does anyone want to raise their hand in opposition to that suggestion?
I, I have a, I have a, just a concern. I'm just wondering if there's, if there is something that gets worked out. You know, it shouldn't only be with B, right? It should be, shouldn't it be, should it be with all of them or?
Well, if there are text amendments, it would apply to all of them, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, as I mentioned before, that these are rezonings, not text amendments. So if, yes, if it was a text amendment, and I don't, we don't have a text amendment for IH at this point. But so these are just map rezonings from one district to the other.
Yeah. So Kristen, do you know the height of the buildings down there in cluster B now?
The cluster B high buildings? I, I'm not exactly sure. If Mr. Duffy is still on, he might be able to help us with the, the height. I know 76 and 80 are lower story buildings. I'm not sure how many. And then 78 is a higher building.
Yeah, so I think 78 is at whatever the maximum is in the district.
78 is?
Yeah, 78, largest building is at the maximum. The other two are just two-story buildings.
So that would be, 80 feet would be the max in IG. And if that's what the 78, and that's right up against the highway on 70, at the 78 building, and the other two are closer to Blanchard Road, which you've mentioned were two stories?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we could be potentially in those buildings going from two stories up to, let's say, an office building went in with, with normal 10-foot ceilings, we, we could be looking at, instead of two stories, we could be looking at what?
Well, as I said before, that if they're already at 0.5, I mean, you're either looking at big flat buildings or you're looking at skinny tall buildings. It's, you gotta take one because at the end of the day, you still only have that much total square footage. So it's, it's just a difference in, you know, is it just two stories and flat, or is it four stories and smaller? So and I mean, that's the whole point of what we were trying to get at. We don't want to be so, so low in height that you're forced to have a low and flat building taking up more percentage of space. Whereas if green space and other things are the goal, we want to try to allow for, you know, a little bit more of that heightsy of less of that footprint. So you have more flexibility of what other things you do on site.
Okay.
Okay. So again, well, what I'm going to suggest is that we again, vote for cluster A, which is 20 South Avenue and 40 South Avenue. And cluster C, which is 20 Blanchard Road, 99 South Bedford and 111 South Bedford. Vote on the two clusters separately. And for cluster B, I'm going to suggest we continue it to our next meeting. Does anyone object to that?
No, I'll make the motion.
Okay, let's, um, how do we do this, Kristen? Should we take C and D together?
So if you look, well, there's no D, but you can take A and C. So we have overall, what you're want to do, if you are going to take B out, you're going to want to, actually, why don't, I would then say, continue B first to the May 6th meeting.
B, cluster B. So that's items E, F, G, and H, correct?
Yes, so continue items E, F, G, and H to the planning board meeting of May 6, 2021.
So moved.
Second. Chairman Maru.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Spayo.
Yes.
Okay. Then I will be looking to take items C and D and vote those together. That is cluster A.
So what you can do if you want, well, just do it that way. So do, close the public hearing on cluster A and then recommend cluster A. Then we'll close the public hearing on C and recommend. So yes, all right. So, motion to close the public hearing on cluster A.
So moved. One second. Can I, can I ask one final question before we do that? One final question is, is, is wetlands, so when we talk about the Florida area, the Florida ground, right? Does that include wetlands or just uplands?
When you talk about the full FAR, it's the full site to the square footage. When you're talking about lot area, developable lot area, it includes wetlands. When you include FAR, it includes just the whole site. Wetlands are not wetlands.
Right. So in other words, someone could purchase a, a, a land that was basically unusable to somebody else because it's wet, because there's a lot of wetlands down in that area. They could purchase a whole bunch of wetlands and then, and then go, uh, uh, put a lot more square footage on there, you know, even if they didn't have the parking. In other words, there is a scenario by which you could purchase a bunch of adjacent wetlands, and it would benefit you as far as adding huge square footage to a site under these scenarios, right?
Well, as I mentioned before, a lot of these, there's, there really are very few sites that are undeveloped along this corridor. And any of these that are in this cluster specifically. There are buildings outside of this cluster that do sit on kind of land and then have a lot of wetlands around. The, one of the potential properties would be the Rounder Way property. But still, the existing square footage at that Rounder Way site is fairly high. So meaning that even, even if you could do that, you might, as Joe, you mentioned before about structured parking, in order to get parking, you may be able to, to structure it. But you're still at a high FAR with the existing building there. So even if that scenario works out, where you can use some of that total area for the FAR. Yeah, I mean, that's why I can't definitively, black and white, say, you know, absolutely it is or it isn't in different scenarios, but.
Right, because I guess combined with these two articles that we're talking about, which is this, you know, to transfer to IH, combined with the parking structure, if there was a large amount of wetlands that were adjacent to any of these properties, it could truly affect, really affect the amount of square footage they could put on these sites.
I guess, maybe, but the point is that they're already built sites that we're looking.
Well, they are built sites, but, you know, we're clearly giving them an incentive to rebuild these sites, right? By, there's a, the simple fact that, you know, if, 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 if there is adjacent wetlands, it makes, it makes all the sense in the world, you know, to, to combine the wetlands to these sites and go with a parking structure and put a high rise and get way more square footage out of it.
Okay, but Joe, right now, we're just talking about items C and D, which are on South Avenue. I don't think that there's any land there for them to purchase.
Well, maybe not. You know, I, I wouldn't, you know, there probably isn't. I don't know. I didn't look at a, a, a map that, to see what's adjacent, if there's wetlands. But I don't think that area probably has as much wetlands. But I know down in the other areas, there's a lot of, a lot of wetlands down in those areas.
Right, but tonight, we're only voting on cluster A, which is what we're discussing right now, the South Avenue buildings. And then we'll do cluster C in a couple of minutes.
Well, again, Barbara, I'm not, you know, I'm not saying there is or there isn't. What I'm saying is I don't know if there is even an A and, and, and in C. I know in B, there's a lot of well, and I don't know if they affect these properties. I don't know, you know, I want to know.
It's a good question.
100% what I'm voting on, and I really don't know that yet. You know, I mean, just given the variables that could possibly take place with the, with the IH, you know, and the parking structures, you know, adjacent wetlands could make a big difference in what kind of square footage you could put on it.
Kristen, would you feel comfortable, are you able to comment on whether or not there is property adjacent to the cluster A properties that would, would work that way, that, that someone could purchase in order to increase their building square footage?
There is not on A.
I didn't think there was an A. And B, there definitely is, I think, almost definitely is. And I, I couldn't comment on C, to be honest with you.
Yes, I don't know. I don't necessarily.
Well, no, but I'm actually, but in B, B, there isn't because B, what's next to B is the Jumbo Self-Storage Project. So there are all of these sites, and I guess the point that I'm trying to make is, these are historically developed sites. If we were sitting in a, in a situation where there, there wasn't development in these sites, and, you know, if Jumbo Self-Storage didn't exist, could cluster B potentially purchase that site and benefit from it? Sure. But it exists, so they can't. And on the other side of cluster B is what we just permitted for Azor. So you're already looking at fully developed sites, and we're really looking at what's next for these sites. And a lot of these sites have way too much pavement, no stormwater protections, and have, as we keep mentioning, a lot of building on them already. So what, what can we put in place to make better sites the next time around with actually not increasing the amount of square footage necessarily by very much because they're already at a high FAR as they sit on the ground, but they sit on the ground in a very different way than we'd really like them to if we could do it all, all over again.
Does that answer your question, Joe?
Well, I mean, it doesn't for that site anyway. I think for the other sites, I'm comfortable with she's saying that, that, you know, Kristen's saying that there is no wetlands in the other areas. I, you know, again, that is.
Continued item, we've already continued cluster B. We're not voting on that.
Yep. Okay.
Forward with cluster A, which is what's before us right now.
Yeah, if she, if Kristen's comfortable that there is no adjacent wetlands anywhere near there, whether it's owned or not owned by them, then, you know, then I'm fine with if we wanted to move forward in those. I, you know, just, you know, those, that, that concerns me, that, you know, there is a scenario by which we pass both of these articles and, you know, we could be increasing square footage of these sites, and we don't really realize it.
There is not adjacent wetland areas in cluster A or C.
Yep.
Okay. So what I'm looking for is a motion on item C and item D to close the public hearing on just those two items.
So moved.
Madam Chair, can I, can I ask one other question?
Sure.
Do we have a high-rise district already?
Yeah, yes, we do. But there's very few.
And this is being referred to as a high-rise district. And at my age, I'm easily confused.
Right, it's not correct. Name is wrong.
High-rise districts that are different.
Right, the high-rise industrial district is improperly named. It only allows buildings 10 feet higher than in the regular business district. So I agree with you, Paul, that it's confusing. And in the future, I think we need to come up with another article where we change the name for that district, but we, we don't have that ready for May town meeting. So we just have to acknowledge that although we're calling it a high-rise industrial district, it's not a high-rise. There are not high-rises allowed there in the, what most people would normally consider high-rises. It's 90 feet instead of 80 feet. But does that make you feel more comfortable, Paul?
No.
No. Well, it's, okay.
Yeah, no. Well, to me, it helps to call things what they are.
I agree. And I think we need to change the name of it, but we can't do that tonight.
Well, I would just not vote on it as, as to vote on it if, in fact, it's, it's misnamed because it's going to go to town meeting.
Right.
That might, that might very well come up there and say, well, you know, why'd you do that? And as you know, town meeting, it can be tough to get town meeting to vote for zonings, and I don't blame them. Good, that's what they're there for. But if this confusing about them, I just soon postpone, clarify it, clarify, and then take to them, take it to them clean, if you will.
I, I, I understand your suggestion. That would mean that none of these things would go forward at May town meeting. Am I correct, Kristen?
Am I, am I muted? No?
No, you're, you're, we can hear you.
If you don't vote, they don't go to town meeting. You can vote up, down, but if you don't vote and you continue, they don't go to town meeting.
Right. And I was clarifying is that we cannot change the name of the high-rise industrial district now for May town meeting.
Oh, no, not at all. That's a text amendment. But, but I agree, it's a misnomer. It's just, you know, we've been through this enough times. And I, as I mentioned, when I began this presentation, zoning is, you know, on the clearest of days is confusing. So to, you know, I just, I didn't want to make it seem like I'm creating this whole nother district. You know, should we have a new name for IH? Should it be, you know, Research and Develop Innovation District, whatever you want to call it? It doesn't matter. But it's, you know, I agree that it's not the saying high-rise when it's exactly the same as the other district.
Yes. So we're going to have to spend some time at town meeting explaining what the very slight difference is between the other district and, and the high-rise district that is really not very high.
Right, and hindsight.
So this is the last meeting we can vote in order to.
No, that's not true, Joe. We are, we have one more meeting, and that's why I was suggesting that we vote on cluster A and C tonight and hold off on B until the next meeting. If the rest of the board is not comfortable moving forward, we can delay all of this until the next meeting.
And when is the next meeting, September?
No, no, the next planning board meeting, which is just, you know, three weeks from now. That's what I meant.
I, no, I understand, but the next one after that is.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, I'm, I'm just, if there's immediacy, immediacy to this, and there was some client standing waiting for us to make the decision, that would be one thing. But if it's, if not everybody is clear on what's going on, you know, I don't think waiting over the summer will make any difference, really.
Except there might be a whole bunch of money out there that the state might be willing to.
But in other words, why don't, I mean, get to Paul's point, why don't we just postpone these three items to the next meeting and vote on them next meeting? Well, we have a full board as well, you know?
I don't think that was Paul's point, but I have no problem doing that. I think Paul was saying we should delay all of them until September town meeting, not May town meeting, so that we can address the name of the district at the same time.
Oh.
Well, I, I don't have any trouble with B, but there are the other two. Sure, but I would just to, if, if I'm not clear on something, if I'm going to buy a car and I'm not sure whether it's got three wheels or four wheels or whatever, I, I hold off until I get some clarity. That's what you put up with when you put up with old people. Sorry.
Okay, so it sounds to me that Joe and Paul are saying that they would prefer to not vote on any of these items and continue them all until our next planning board meeting when we have a full board. Am I understanding you correctly?
Well, I'm somewhat comfortable in those two, but I'm not 100% comfortable, and I would rather see the adjacent properties on all of these sites.
Let's wait.
That's.
Yeah, that's a yes, Barbara. He wants to wait.
Okay. Well, then I'm, I'm looking for a motion to continue.
Motion to continue all these matters until the planning board meeting of May 6th. Is that where we are? I'm sorry.
Yes.
May 6, 2021.
Chairman Maru.
Yes.
Chairman, Vice Chairman Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Spayo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney. Member Rapaporter.
Right. So now we are going back to page four, which is item 7B, a public hearing to amend the zoning bylaw, Article 7, as they pertain to parking structures and garages, also submitted by the planning board. Kristen?
Okay, so thank you. Item B. So if you recall, so this, or if you recall the last meeting, we took out anything regarding the floor area ratio amendment and just took this piece, this parking garages. and just took this piece, this parking garages, parking structures and garages in Article 7, specifically 727 and 7271, which deals with aggregate, maximum aggregate building to ground area percentage, which is the footprint, not the whole, not the FAR, but the footprint of the build, of the structure, the building on the, to the whole site. So aggregate building to ground area percentage. In, so also, let me just go, oh, sorry, slide Joe, slide Joe. If you recall, back in September 2020, we did the amendment for the ESCADREL, which allowed for parking decks in the BG district and put a bunch of criteria in which that would be true, or would be allowed. And the criteria, which is in 7272, which it needed to be 200 feet from residential boundary at a minimum lot area of 150,000 square feet, the parking structure must be an accessory used to a function facility. And we also added the green space requirement, which the green space equivalent to the park or the, the equivalent to the square footage of green space equal to 200% of the footprint of that parking structure. None of those things are changing. What we also did in September was add a Section 7271, which itemized all of the structured parking and made this blanket statement to say that all of the structured parking should be considered in maximum aggregate building to ground without clarifying that we meant the BG district when we were talking about this. In the past, there has been a little bit of an inconsistency with the zoning bylaw, the definition of building and the building code in terms of structured parking versus building. Structured parking is not considered a building within the definition of building in the zoning bylaw. So structured parking has never been interpreted as to be less needing to be in the maximum aggregate to building area ground percentage. By adding Section 271, we further clarified, which is usually a good thing in the zoning bylaw, but we didn't clarify it specifically enough to the topic at hand, which was the BG district for which we were discussing at the time. And therefore it affects all other structured parking in districts, which structured parking is allowed in the IH district, as we've been talking about. And the only other area structured, well, and structured parking is also allowed in the town center overlay and within the IG district only with hospitals, which is the Leahy Clinic Garage that you are, all know. And just what I got into explaining that calculation. So what this does, and you know, we look at a lot of things in terms of what's, what is the regulation? What do we intend it to do? What is the goal? And you know, there's always a kind of a carrot and stick approach to all of these regulations. And how do we incentivize something to happen in, you know, the market conditions so it can happen? But how can we make sure we put the appropriate controls in place that it happens the way we want? But what this, what this regulation by clarifying to say that structured parking structures must now be in the building to ground area percentage, which in the IG and IH districts is 25%, which is not a lot. Then therefore what we're, by doing that, you're pretty much asking a developer to then look at it and say, okay, I have a building, I can only put in 25% footprint, but if I want to do a parking garage, I have to take away building square footage, revenue-producing square footage to then build a parking garage, which I don't believe was the intent. And I don't know anyone who would make that decision, since parking structures are already so cost prohibitive in terms of their building them. So just again, back of the envelope, kind of site planning, what are really the things that control site development? And we've talked a lot about so far tonight about the floor area ratio. So you know, what size is your site? What's the maximum I can build? Okay. So that's, you know, with, in IG, it's 0.15 that can go to 0.25. If you do have in IH, the life science piece, you can go now to the 0.5. And then you obviously have to look at the, the site, right, you know, site and physical attributes. Then, okay, how, what are my setbacks and what's the height? What's this imaginary box I can build? And then you look at building to ground and then can you park what this imaginary box is? But if I have to now trade this imaginary box and put my parking structure in this imaginary box, then again, you're starting to, you're taking away the, that, why would you build a parking garage? Where when you have this site, you have this imaginary box, you don't have any prohibition on being able to pave the site. So immediately you're incentivizing paved just surface parking versus in taking and disincentivizing any structure. So is that the intent of what we're looking for when, you know, something's in front of the planning board and you say, I really wish we could have more parking, I mean, more green space and how can we figure that out with parking? I mean, just at 300 Summit, when it was in front of you, they have a parking deck and Member Covino said, well, this is great. Can you put more of the parking in the parking deck so you can have more green space? Well, sure, but would they make that decision if they then had to trade that for the revenue-producing square footage? I think that would be a difficult decision. So. So that's kind of where we are with controls. What, so what, and I just mentioned what we want, is kind of that flex, more flexible site design, so we can, we then can have that conversation about, obviously, put up more pedestrian areas and green space. And if you recall in January 2020, the amendment, the IH amendment, which we again, also just talked about in the last discussion, that we do have the footnote that allows for you to park under the building. But again, before we said, oh, it'd be so great if you park under the building, because then it's taking area that's already impervious. But it was, well, wait a minute, if I can park under the building, then I'm going to lose a story of, of height. So therefore we increase the height just a little, so you could park under the building and not lose. Because again, you're disincentivizing what we want. We want people to be able to integrate parking under the building, so they can build less parking outside of the building, so therefore using more of the space for different types of uses. So that was the carrot, but then the stick of that was, okay, if you do that, we want to make sure that you're not just building more parking, because you can park under the building, but that you're setting aside the equivalent green space of that footprint, of that underbuilding footprint. So that, that, just wanted to highlight that that exists. It remains unchanged. Nothing's changing there. I'm just kind of trying to get at the, how this actually works when we're trying to, you know, and what we're trying to do versus over, you know, just again, just the carrots and sticks of trying to get what we want at the end of the day. Um, so again, just, you know, if we vote no on this article, then, you know, it's still structured parking would be now included, because we have clarified that within the zoning bylaw. And if we vote yes, we go back to the way we have been interpreting and developing sites. And therefore hopefully, again, incentive, giving more of an incentive to parking garages, less incentive to over paving surface parking and, you know, not penalizing someone for having to trade building area for parking structure. So this did go to land use on Tuesday. Land use voted favorably in the, in terms of the article. We also discussed this, yes, last night was zoning bylaw review. Zoning bylaw review, actually, and let me go back to the very, sorry. The zoning bylaw review, in the article, we have that, you know, we kept in place the BG provision, because that's what we had talked about in September. We didn't want to, you know, undo the discussion that we had had then. And so therefore we, we said exclusive of parking within the BG. So this is included within the BG, as was discussed last September. Zoning bylaw review actually wanted to strike that, because they did believe that the argument of, well, you know, why would, why would we want to penalize someone for doing what we kind of want them to do? And be able to have that conversation about green space. So they had asked me to ask town council if striking that provision would be within the scope of the advertisement. I still, you know, still need to talk to council about that, but just wanted to update you guys in terms of where they were. So they're waiting to vote till their next meeting, but generally straw poll, they're in favor of the amendment. So any questions?
Thank you, Kristen. Okay, uh, Joe, do you want to start us off?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay, Paul Raymond.
No, I'm all set.
All right, Ernie Covino.
I'm all set.
All right, Mike Espia.
All set, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, I also have no questions. Is there anyone in the listening audience that would like to comment or make a, or ask a question? Seeing no one, I think we are ready to move on. I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing, please.
So moved.
And seconded.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman and Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Stahoe.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to recommend favorably on a petition to amend the zoning bylaw Article 7 as it is building to ground area percentage for parking structures and garages as submitted by the planning board.
Do I have a second?
Ernie, you're on mute. Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman and Pemba. Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Members Stahoe.
Yes.
Vice Chairman and Pemba, what did you vote? I think that's a yes. Okay.
Yes.
Excellent. Thanks, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I ask clarification? So that, so we just voted this with, uh, still excluding BG, is that correct?
Yes.
Kristen? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda for my fellow board members, we're skipping up to, forward to page nine. And we're at Item 7L, which is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.6.10 Restaurants of the Zoning Bylaw, 10 Wall Street, Waterville Business Development LLC, doing business as ExGolf Burlington is the applicant. And who is here representing ExGolf?
I am, Madam Chair. Good evening. For the record, Christine Hung, attorney at Reemer and Bronstein. You probably were expecting Mark Vaughn tonight, but I'm pinching for him as he has a conflict with the hearing in another municipality. So with me tonight, I have John Benjamin from ExGolf. And at the last planning board hearing, John and Mark gave an in-depth presentation on the innovative full-service restaurant concept with a indoor golf simulator that's going into the former, a portion of the former Chuck E. Cheese restaurant at 10 Wall Street. We understand that given COVID and these Zoom meetings, that the planning board's policy is not to approve these meetings in one in meeting, but to have them in two meetings. And, and at the last meeting, we answered questions that the board had. We're back again. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have and we are hoping that we could get a favorable, favorable ruling tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Christine. Kristen, did you want to add anything before I turn this over to the board?
Um, no, just a reminder that within the decision, you're going to see all of the similar things for restaurants in terms of employee parking, to make sure they're not in, you know, prime parking areas. You know, trash enclosures and, you know, odor control is applicable. I mean, these guys are kind of more heat and serve type restaurant, not, you know, heavy-duty fry leaders and other things going on. But it's been a long time since we've seen Chuck E. Cheese, so we just wanted to have an inventory of kind of what was there, what was on the, you know, operating and make sure everything's in, in proper operating conditions as well as the condition that's in all of your permits about temporary signage on and off the property to make sure that it's, you know, doesn't start to litter the areas. And that's about it. Otherwise, we're good to go. And we have a decision to offer.
Thank you. All right. As Attorney Hung mentioned, we have discussed this, but we'll run through the board quickly and see if anybody has any additional questions. Joe and Pemba?
No, I'm all set.
Paul Raymond?
No, I just wanted to mention that this is really a reuse, because many years ago, there was a place like this here. It was great fun. You'd go in and eat and play games with the kids and so forth. So I'm looking forward to this.
Okay, good, good. Ernie Covino?
All set, Madam Chair, thank you.
Mike Espia?
All set, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, I also have no questions, so let's move on. I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
So moved.
And seconded.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman and Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Members Stahoe.
Yes.
And now the special permit?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of one special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.6.10 Restaurants of the Burlington zoning bylaw to permit the operation of a restaurant, an indoor golf simulator facility by the name of ExGolf, for property located in the general business district located at 10 Wall Street, subject to the terms, conditions, terms and conditions exhibited, exhibit A attached.
Seconded.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman and Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Members Stahoe.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, ExGolf. We'll look forward to checking you out. When do you intend to open?
Thank you. I'm, I'm hoping to open in the September timeframe.
Wonderful. Okay, well, best of luck to you. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
I, I, I'm looking forward to it as well, and I want to thank you and everyone on this board for your assistance with this. And, and I appreciate the, the time and energy you put into this. Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to seeing you all at the ExGolf Burlington store in September.
Great, great. Okay, best of luck with it.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Stay healthy and safe.
Thanks, you too. Okay, next I am looking for a motion to take Items 7M through 7Q together for discussion purposes.
So moved.
And seconded.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman and Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Members Stahoe.
Yes.
Okay, Items M through Q are all, the, the applicant is Desktop Metal Incorporated, located at 1 North Avenue. Item M is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 12.1.5 PD Special Permit of the Zoning Bylaw. Item 7N is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 1.5.1 light manufacturing or processing plants of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions. Item 7O is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.5.2 Laboratories Engaged in Research, Experimental and Testing Activities, including but not limited to the fields of biology, chemistry, electronics, engineering, geology, medicine, and physics, subject to the planning board making the findings set forth in Section 8.3.7.4 of the zoning bylaws and subject to the applicable rules and regulations of the Board of Health of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw. Item P is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 1.5.4 hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal, or discharge of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions. And Item 7Q is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 1.5.5 generation or storage of hazardous waste limited to the volumes classified as very small quantity generator of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw positions, excuse me, visions. Thank you. So who is here representing Desktop Metal?
Hi, I'm Kevin Lee. I'm Director of Operations of Desktop Metal. I have with us today Holly Lynch, who is our safety manager, and also Andrew Jeffrey, who is in charge of the group that we want to apply for these special permits for. I'll let Andrew introduce his concept and then company. It was an acquisition of Desktop Metals not too long ago, late 2020. And we're looking forward to doing some pretty exciting things in the 3D printing industry. And I'll, with that, I'll let Andrew take it away.
Thank you. I think you may be on mute, Andrew.
Okay, the perennial hazards of web meetings. Anyway, I'd like to thank everyone for, you know, giving us the time to talk to you about Forest and our new business that we're creating. What we do is we take sawdust, which is generated as a waste material from furniture making. And we use that sawdust in 3D printing machines to make useful decorative wooden objects. And we, it's it's pretty straightforward, really. We purchased the sawdust from a company that processes processes it to the particle size that we need to use. We mix it with a powdered wood glue, and then we load that material into the machines and we jet and it basically an aqueous material onto the powdered mixture, and that selectively joins the wood glue together in the shape that we want to make. And that's that's in a nutshell, the process.
Barbara, you're on mute, too.
There we go. Sorry about that. I'm very curious to know what types of items you actually produce.
We're producing, you know, decorative objects for interior design. So these would be things like, you know, trays, small trays, lighting objects, you know, bases for lamps. We're doing some experimentation with ashboards for cars, that sort of thing. So it's really, you know, some wooden tiles. That's another another example of a product. So mostly interior interior design type objects.
Very interesting. Thank you. All right, Kristen, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Um, so we we have seen Forest, which Forest is the company, they're kind of under the desktop metal umbrella now, but Forest is is this company name. A couple of times or twice at the development coordination meeting, they're still working with the Board of Health on just some matters there, as well as with the building department, looking for some some checklists on their side. So we're we're not at a point where we're looking to vote on this this evening. It is the first hearing. But I I think, you know, just with the cluster of additive manufacturing here in Burlington, starting with Z Corp in the 90s, I mean, you know, it's it's just a really exciting growth industry, and I think Desktop kind of launched us into the stratosphere of like putting us on the map here, and I really appreciate Desktop being here. And and I think I don't want to underestimate, you know, really their presence in Burlington for this this industry. And I don't want to make the meeting last any longer than it needs to, but I don't know if anyone from Desktop wants to give a little bit of a just a few minutes on what you guys are doing. I mean, you're you're kind of, you know, change in the world here with metal 3D printing. So I think it's, you know, as much as in, so I don't, and I don't want to distract from Forest because Forest is is very exciting, and I think we're going to see super exciting things there, too. But anyway, it's just, you know, these are the kind of companies that you don't hear enough stories about, and it's nice to have them here at this meeting. So I don't know if you want to you know, talk through questions you have at Forest, and then just before we conclude, maybe if if you guys from Desktop can kind of give us the just what's happening under the desktop umbrella, what does it mean for for us in Burlington, and what can we tell all our friends that I wish I could say all our friends at cocktail parties we're having, but no one has cocktail parties anymore because we're all, it's, you know, we're all social distancing, but at least around our fire pit. So what's cool, things are going on in Burlington. So with that, we're all set. We're waiting again for other departments to weigh in, and hopefully by May 6, we'll position to move forward.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. Desktop Metal, did you have anything you wanted to update us on? Okay.
Sure.
Please go ahead.
I can give you an update on on things that we've been doing lately. So when we came to Burlington quite a few years ago, probably four or five years ago now, we had one concept of 3D printing, and it was a studio system that was meant for work inside homes and offices, mostly offices and engineering departments, something that's affordable, that many companies could have, you know, purchased and do metal 3D prints. Since then, we've launched several other project products that are bringing us to a production level with the binder system that Andy is actually using in a similar fashion, but with wood instead of metal. So we've got quite a few products now. We have a large production machine that we're working on a second revision of. We have a small version called Shop, which is meant for working machine shops, something that doesn't need a full-scale production system. And we also have something called Lab, which is for experimentation with different materials. So some of the different difficult things with metal is that, you know, each metal is different, there's different reactions with air, with, you know, different binders. This small system is going to be used for being able to print with new metals that, you know, we can't do today, and that's how the development process works. And Andrew is basically probably the latest that we're of of technology that we're working on in Burlington.
So I just want to add to that, that it seems like, and, you know, obviously you guys know, but what I'm feeling from a lot of industries that talk to us is, you know, you guys are definitely a little bit of the magnetic effect of, you know, desktops here, we want to use stuff that you you're you guys are creating, and we have a lot of people coming in with interest in your product and like Forest, what they can do with your product. So it's it's really exciting for us to have you here in bringing in these these other companies to to try things. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, let's see if the board has questions for you. Mike Espia, would you like to start us off?
No questions, Madam Chair, thank you.
Ernie Cavino?
Yep, all set, Madam Chair, thank you.
Paul Raymond?
No, just note that there was an article in the newspaper, and they're projecting in the future that all manufacturing is going to go this way, that they're going to be doing everything with, you know, high compression and informing these materials and so forth. So that is really cutting edge, and we're at the front of it. So I want to congratulate them for coming to Burlington and thank them.
Okay.
That's all, Madam.
Thank you. Joe?
No, I'm all set. Actually, I there is, there's a similar type of a technology where they're actually building houses with it now.
Right?
Yes, we we hope they'll be one of our customers for the interior design part of it.
Okay, well, I also do not have any questions, but before we continue this, I'll ask if there's anyone in the listening audience that would like to make a comment or ask a question. Okay, seeing no one, I am ready for a motion.
Want to approve instead of continue?
Because we, under the pandemic, we have made the commitment to never open and close in one meeting, so we will continue to our next.
We also don't have any department comments yet. That's really the critical reason.
Sometimes we can move move very quickly. Continue this, Madam, the planning board meeting of May 6.
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman and Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Members Stay Hall.
Yes.
Okay, so we will see you at our next meeting in May. Thank you so much for coming tonight and and explaining to us about your very interesting technology.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thanks very much for having us. Yes, look forward to May.
Okay, we will see you then. Okay, the next, I'm sorry. Did I miss something? No, okay. So the next item on our agenda is minutes. We have minutes from April 1st. Yes.
At the beginning of the meeting, I asked you if I could bring something up, and you said yes, so I held it.
And I forgot, sorry, Paul.
Okay, when in the past, the first thing that happens after we after an election is we reorganize, which I assume you did while I was trying to get in.
Actually, no. We we didn't we work, we did not reorganize tonight because both Bill and Brenda are not with us tonight, so we decided to wait until our next meeting when we have a full board.
Okay, Mike, because my question was about recreation commission.
Oh.
Because we usually do that, so let's hold that till then, then also.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Sorry, I have to back to to give you the chance to ask that question earlier.
Sure. I just want to mention also that one of our members was, I believe, received a large vote the recent recent election, which is certainly a tribute to Joe. He's known and respected by the community, and we're certainly glad to have him on the planning board. So congratulations on that, Joe. I think you were the the top vote getter. If you're not, you should have been. I also want to mention that there was a letter to the editor, very nice letter, and you should get it and read it by Barbara LaRue, and it was regarding the proposed friendly 40B project. And I want to know if there's anything we can do about that, because I understand it's heading right to the Board of Appeals. And I really feel for the people in that neighborhood. To me, that's exactly the opposite of we want to do is take an apartment, a condo complex, and jam it into a small piece of land in a neighborhood, and the people are down there very upset on Richardson Road, and I don't blame them. So that's my question. If there's any impact with that's a friendly 40B that the planning board can have, since it didn't come from us.
Thank you, Paul. I'm actually going to ask Kristen to give us an update, but I will say, as you know from my letter, that I have I have a lot of concerns about this as well. And at some point in the future, if this moves forward, we, of course, have told the Board of Appeals that they should use the expertise of our staff to help them through the process, but we also, I think, as a board, will weigh in and give our opinions to the Board of Appeals, but it, right now, it's not really moving correctly. Well, I'll let Kristen update us on where things stand right now.
Let me just thank you. Thank you, Paul. I appreciate your your word, your words of congratulations. Thank you.
Well, 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 there, Joe.
Thank you.
Yes. So let's keep on this thing on Richardson Road. Is that what it's called, Winston Road?
Yes.
So the quick answer is that it's kind of in a holding pattern. We I'm happy to discuss it more, but it's in a holding pattern. They have not discussed it for many meetings. They they I do anticipate next Tuesday night, there will be some discussion, and we'll know more at that meeting. But there's a lot that needs to happen before they're anywhere near making a decision. So you know, I'm happy to discuss it more. I'm not sure if we want to take the discussion item we have up first. So the other people that are on this meeting, we can talk through that. And then if you have any other questions on the Windview project, we can certainly come back to it.
Okay, thank you. One other thing, Barbara, and that's it. Burlington is really getting on the map. Microsoft recently did a billion-dollar deal to acquire Nuance Technology of Burlington. And there were a number of articles in the business section and so forth about that. So we we're generating and have some really, really top-level companies. Thank you. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Okay, so we do have minutes to approve before we move on to our last item. So we are looking for approval for minutes for the meeting of April 1st, 2021. And again, I want to thank Dawn and Brady for keeping us so up to date. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Is there anyone who cannot vote on the minutes for April 1st? Great, then I'm looking for a motion.
So move, Paul Raymond.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman and Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Members Stay Hall.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then the last item on our agenda is a discussion regarding the release of Lot Six, which is for Dartmouth Road from the General Walker Estates definitive subdivision. Kristen, can you just summarize for us?
Sure. So General Walker Estates subdivision, you guys approved in 2016. There was a minor engineering change some years later. They for the three and five lots, they appealed that. That has been, that litigation is concluded. The first motion for judgment is filed. They are working. They also were had an amendment to the subdivision, which came in front of you guys to eliminate the cul-de-sac on Francis Wyman Road. They are actively working at 101 and 103 to construct the houses, as Mr. Miller mentioned earlier. On those two sites, you have released 101 and 103 for building purposes only. You have not released them for sale. Three and five, as you know, you released for sale quite some time ago. And we are still holding four Dartmouth and six Dartmouth under the covenant. The applicant has requested that we release Lot Six for sale. At this time, they it's unclear as to if the new owner is just moving into the house as is, if they had plans to build a new house. I know Mr. Materazzo and us have had a conversation about the the original plan was to build all all new houses. This this one was up in the air. They started to do interior work, and the building department got involved. Anyway, the long story. There, we did ask them when we started having these conversations a week or two week, two weeks ago, to make sure that we understood the update of all work remaining, especially the work relating to the minor engineering change, and when that would be complete and when that would be mobilizing. They have given us a timeline. Do I still have it up? Hold on. Yes, I do. Hold on, let me try to share just because it's easier than watching. Um, so Francis, why I know this, you I know you can't read this. I'm not expecting you to. I just wanted to kind of this starts February and it ends May of May 21, so before June. So they're hoping to conclude the 101 and 103 work within this timeframe. It's early summer. The apartment group construction, the work that is within some of the wait, what's the Dartmouth Road construction? Anyway, let me go back to that one. The three and five Dartmouth work, which is what we were most concerned about, that they are looking to mobilize this week. And the proper, as you know, people are living in those houses, they've requested that it be done quickly. And they're hoping to finish that work again in 101, 103. They're looking to finish the work within the the roadway, including the green on the driveway, the drain to daylight, the outlet for the drainage system and the other work and the extra drainage system that's required at the end of the driveway at five, all to be pretty much done this week and next week. But which was important to us to understand. Considering this is really understanding where all the pieces were. Also, if you recall, there was a discussion about the the cul-de-sac and the the old cul-de-sac, the new cul-de-sac. We've submitted it twice to town meeting. We just had a conversation last this week with Lisa Mead about trying to figure out when the best time is to look at that. Initially, there was a discussion. Initially, there was a discussion with Waypoint, as well as the neighbor. Mr. Madarazzo was to, you know, conveying that back to those properties. There was a kind of the discussions with the Waypoint of, well, if we can do that, then they'll build the new house. At this point, there, it doesn't matter either way. They want to, just, they, they want to convey this property out and sell it out. We're holding it under the covenant. In speaking with Lisa, Lisa Mead, our town council, if, so the process under subdivision control is we're holding lots under the covenant. We're holding surety to ensure, and holding them under the covenant ensures that the, all public improvements are constructed. So therefore, as the lots are released, these public improvements that are, the responsibility of the developer are done. In that, and as you guys know, there's like Form A through ZZ of subdivision control and a lot of administration. But it's if you do, if you do these things, then you get X. So if, so we have this outstanding work. We've asked them to scope all the work that's outstanding and submit a, a surety bond to cover any of the outstanding work. We also have asked them for a timeline of completion, which, as Lisa said, you can ask, but they don't have to give them to you. And in exchange for that outline of work and the surety bond, we release the property. When we get to that last lot, which as I mentioned before, we're holding 103, 101, and 6 Dartmouths still under the covenant. When we get to the last one, as you guys know, it's, then you start really going through a hard checklist of full completion and full completion, release of surety. And then, you know, at the end of the day, recommending to, making a motion of completeness, recommending to town meeting on all of the conveyances and/or acceptance of the public way. So that's where we are. And council has advised that, you know, we do all of these things, get all this information, get the surety amount, and move forward with releasing Lot 4 for sale. So that's, that's the story. I know there's a lot of iterations of discussion around this, so I'll try to answer as best I can.
Okay, thank you. Board members, does anyone have any questions on the release of this lot?
I thought you just said Lot 4. It's Lot 6.
It's Lot 6. Lot 6 for Dartmouth, and if I mispoke, I apologize. I've been doing it for this, the whole time.
I see Ernie has his hand raised. Ernie, please go ahead.
A question for Kristen. Did I hear you say that in the workflow that they, sorry, in the workflow they showed you or gave you, they said they'll be done with, what is it, 3 and 5? What are the two lots that we just asked them to make some changes on? The drainage?
The minor engineering changes.
Right, right.
Were all the 3 and 5 work.
3 and 5.
That was what was appealed and therefore in litigation for quite some time, so that work wasn't done.
Okay, and they're saying two weeks they'll be done? They're saying that they'll be done?
They're looking to mobilize with materials this week and, and get on site. They do have to coordinate with the property owners, and what I've asked is that they notify us when the, you know, definitely with time to be aware of the, of them going out on site and mobilizing to do the work, so we can have the proper town staff observing that work.
But they're, they're projecting completion in two weeks. Is that what you, I, I thought I heard you say that. Was I correct?
Yeah, well, what we asked them, because they, when we were, had the conference call this week, they didn't have, they hadn't have it mapped out. So what I said is, at such time, like what, what is the time from beginning to end that it will take to do this? So therefore, and when do you, they hope to do it. They hope to do it soon. So if property owner at 3 says, okay, I'm going to be, you know, you can mobilize Tuesday. It should be, you know, soon after Tuesday that they do it. The 5 Dartmouth says, you know, you can't come to my property till Friday. Maybe they can't do that work. But overall, it's, the mobilizing period of time is not a, a long period of time.
Okay, do you have any idea whether there is, exists a purchase and sales agreement on 4 Dartmouth? Do you have any idea?
Yes, there does. There, there is.
There is.
It's been, yeah, there is.
And it's been extended, okay.
It's been extended, and I have talked to the buyer's attorney.
Okay, the reason for my questions, is there any possibility of us voting on this, but you actually hold on delivering it until the improvements are made on 3 and 5 Dartmouth? If it's only a couple of weeks?
I can, I, I, I can, we can try to do that, and I can, so if you vote and that's a condition of your vote, I can verify with council if, in fact, that can be done. If she says that it's outside of your authority, then I can't. But if, if she agrees with the condition, then we certainly can.
I'd be willing to vote in favor if that condition was in there.
Okay. And I suspected, you know, I, when we talked about, when we talked about it with her, I suspected that you would be of that mindset, and she, she cautioned a little bit, but I think she, she definitely cautioned a little bit. But we didn't, I didn't ask that exact question, but I think if we make that motion, I just want to advise to all of you that if for some reason you make the motion and it's not in your power to do so, then.
Obviously, yes, right, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yep.
Thank you, Ernie. Does anyone else have any other questions? So that was on the board. What about members of the audience? I know there's a few people here from the neighborhood. Does anyone want to speak on this matter before we vote?
I would.
Go ahead, Mr. Miller.
First, I have a question. Kristen, when I saw your slide you put up, on the 5 Dartmouth minor engineering change things, you had the term concrete drywall. Was that, is that the same as another name for the infiltration system? Is that what was in the, the minor engineering change? Or is that something that's changed along the way with litigation?
Nothing's changed with the design and litigation. The, the plan is the plan. The only thing that, in terms of that, the drainage system at the end of the driveway, it's as it was approved.
Okay.
There was no change nor any change to that piece of the litigation.
Okay, thank you. And the only, I just want to make one comment. I'll spare the board. You already know how I feel about this project. But the sale of 4 Dartmouth as-is, without knocking it down and building up a new house, to me, it puts an exclamation point on how much of the General Walker Estates project deviated from the approved plans. I think that's, to me, says it all. Thank you, all I want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? I see Mr. Madarazzo is here. Did you want to say anything, Anthony?
Yeah, Anthony Madarazzo to Dartmouth Road, and, you know, we've, we've exchanged many, many communications about this. So I'll keep it brief. I, I just want to ask, does your town council and, and everyone on the planning board just understand that the, you approved a, a road design that was based on that house facing a certain way? And so now if that house is staying the way that it is, it's facing the complete wrong direction. It's not even facing the street. Just want to make sure that everyone understands that before, before you make your decisions. But, but that, that's really it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. I think we do understand that. I think unfortunately, that we don't have anything we can do about it. Sadly. That's a great point, to our town council. I'm sorry. All right. I think that's all there is to say on this matter. It's been, I know, a very long and difficult process for all the neighbors. But I think we are compelled to move forward with this one, at least, with the understanding that we hold other lots, and will, we have that leverage to make sure they complete the rest of the work. May I have a motion on this matter?
Do you want me to try to read a modified motion that?
That would be helpful, yes, thank you.
So I would make a motion, motion the planning board hereby releases Lot 6 for Dartmouth Road from the General Walker Estates definitive subdivision conditional approving, improvement, approval covenant for the purposes of sale in exchange for surety to complete all remaining public improvements. And I would add a sentence in there to say, the plan, Planning Board will hold release until such time as all remaining work related to the minor engineering change at 3 and 5 Dartmouth is complete. And then further lots at 6, well, let's see. So we have, usually that sentence also includes when surety is submitted. We have the surety already. So I wouldn't add that, but then, and the other, the last part of the sentence is just to remind everyone that lots at 6 Dartmouth and 101 and 103 remain under the covenant.
Okay.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, but I'd almost like it read again. Significant change in what we're voting on, which I don't have before me.
So what, I mean, what you're voting on, you're releasing it, but you, you're giving us the direction that we are holding that release until such time as that date specific, that the work is complete. What I would presume will happen is if council is not okay with that condition, we may need to revisit this at the next meeting. Just to amend it, because it's probably not in my power to just strike it, because it's a motion of the board, but we can certainly move forward with it. I just need to advise you guys that it may be.
I think, Madam Chair, then a suggestion that we put in a subject to approval by town council after the holding until the improvements are done. Can we do that, Kristen?
Sure.
In the motion?
Sure.
That way you don't have to come back to us if it's not legal.
Yeah, I mean, as I said, I, I, I've been with you guys long enough to, I think, expect that that was where I thought you'd probably be heading. And, you know, I don't think it'll, she'll have a, be surprised that we're, you know, trying to get there. So, well, we'll do what we can.
Okay, thank you.
Under subdivision control, and I, I know we just have, not, there's areas where we do have discretion, and there's areas that we, we just don't have the power and discretion to do certain things, and that's kind of where we are, and unfortunately.
Thank you.
Doing the best we can to navigate through that.
So it has been moved and seconded?
Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman in Pemba?
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond?
Yes.
Member Covino?
Yes.
Member Espeha?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, so that is our agenda. Does anyone have any other business that they would like to bring forward at this time?
Do you want enough, do you want any update on Windview and a couple more sentences?
Yes, I think that would be good.
Anyway, Windview Heights, they, from what I know, and it's with the Board of Appeals, so, you know, I don't want to, you know, overstep with, with their review. But there's the original application. There was a follow-up application, which has been discussed in some of the letters to the editor, to amend the easement over Windview 1, which is a condition of the original approval that they have the right to do. As I've said before at this group, so there, there's the original application, and there's the amendment to, let's see, was it Windview 1 or from the, it may have been the Richards, anyway, there's two easements. It's to amend one of them, and it's just too late, and we've had a long period, I don't remember exactly which one it was. But, um, to amend that easement. So there's two applications that are in front of the Board of Appeals. From the beginning, there were questions about the, the legal rights and the easements and can power to gain site control to build this project based on the existing easement language. So the Board of Appeals had asked that their council present a legal opinion on that matter for then our town council to review. That legal opinion is not yet in. So that's, that's kind of one of the major steps in the beginning before they really start to heavily review the project. There was also, we didn't have a full civil plan set until a few weeks ago. They did make a motion at the Board of Appeals to hire peer review, which is typical. That peer review, I don't believe has, they may have started looking at the plans themselves. I don't, they haven't had any presentation with departments or anything on those civil plans yet, because I think the chairman of the Board of Appeals is really waiting for that memo about the easements to ensure that they have site control to build this project in the first place. So, but what I do know is that they, that secondary application was supposed to open on April 6. They did not take testimony. They opened it and continued to April 20th. So that's why I'm just pointing to. I would hope that the Board of Appeals gives some sort of update at their next meeting on the 20th as to really where this stands with them. So I would tune in next Tuesday. As, that's as far as I know of all the information. There's, as I said, it's just been in a, kind of a holding pattern for a little while. And I know there was quite a bit of back and forth with the letters to the editor, and I'm not going to speak to those, and I know the, the chairman was involved. But in terms of the project, there's, nothing's happening soon. And I do know that the Board of Appeals reached out to departments, or at least asked at their meeting for departments to weigh in prior to when they do take a vote. And again, we just haven't, we're not at that step yet. But we would expect at that point, before the planning department weighed in, for you, certainly to bring it to you guys comments and submit to the Board of Appeals.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions about that? Okay. All right, then.
Just one, one comment, Madam Chair. I didn't have a chance to attend that housing choice review that Lisa Mead did, but I did just listen to it this afternoon. And, and I would urge any of my fellow members, if they haven't, do it, because it's very, very interesting.
It is very interesting, and there, I, I ended up with a lot of questions too, which I think we're going to probably need another session at some point. Yeah.
Yes, please. I'm sorry, what was, what was that, Ernie?
The new housing choice legislation that was passed, Lisa Mead did a review of it, and it's, it was recorded, so it's available to look at. It's interesting, Joe, it's really interesting.
Yeah, okay, good. One other item, the, I just had brought up in the past, and it's still, okay, I don't, I don't know if they added an additional dumpster over there at those apartments on, at Builder 19. There's now three dumpsters out on the street. You know, in plain view of the street. And I'm not sure, I, I'm pretty positive we would not have allowed that to, so I'm not sure that they were noted on any site plan over there. You know, they, they should be on the backside of the building somewhere and, and screened or something. But there's literally three dumpsters out there in plain view on, on Cambridge Street.
Thank you, Joe, for bringing that up. I, I do remember talking to, about it, and I hadn't, I have not yet reached out to the Duffy's. But you're right, they shouldn't be where they are.
I should have, I actually had, one of them was before us today, we should have asked about that. But that's okay, all right.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. All right, thanks, everybody.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman in Pemba?
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond?
Yes.
Member Covino?
Sure, yes.
Member Espeha?
Yes.
Can I ask on the rezonings? If any of you have questions before May 6, please reach out. Because there's, you know, it, I want to make sure, one, I'm prepared to answer. And two, you know, if you guys are, need any clarity, we're obviously happy to offer that.
And I think it actually would probably make sense for you to reach out to Member Gaffney and Member Rappaport as well, just to make sure that they'll be ready to vote on, on these in May.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.